Today is Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Here.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Here.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez is absent for this meeting.
Okay, welcome to the meeting. This is a privilege of mine, the person I've ever done this, so just be patient if I mess something up. So be it, we'll move forward. The mayor's on a well-deserved vacation. We'll have the invocation by Tim Janosa from Big Valley Grace Church and then the pledge allegiance.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, thank you for today, for this community in the city and all the people that serve in it. And thank you for their time and their tireless effort. Thank you for the way that they contribute again and again, using their best wisdom and their best guidance, and the best knowledge that they have, looking out for the citizens and how best we might pursue the future. There are going to be more wisdom and more understanding, so Father, give that to them, help them to do that which is righteous and good, and always considering how best to care, even when that may not be the easiest road. Help them to do that, Lord, and it may be a profitable meeting with great decisions made and ones that will cause us to pursue the future in the best way that we can. We thank you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, now presentations. From the Stanislaus Arts Council, we have Austin Romito.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Austin Romito. I'm a project manager over at the Stanislaus Arts Council. So we're the official state local partner to the California Arts Council, and we do promotion and advocacy of the arts in Stanislaus County. So I'm going to be sharing about some funding, some arts funding coming to the county, which is really exciting. Where should I point the clicker? Okay, oh, there we go. Perfect. So yeah, we are going to be participating in a grant program called the Heartland Creative Core. It's a collaboration between Stanislaus County, Topeka County, and Merced County. And so some backstory, in two thousand twenty-one, the state of California, in response to COVID, approved sixty million dollars in arts funding as a job creation initiative. And so the three counties got together and created this program to apply for the funding and were awarded four point two million dollars. And based on population, one point eight million of that is going to be coming to Stanislaus County. So it's one point eight million, it's job creation. So eighty percent of the funding is designed to fund salaries for artists in your community to create public pieces of work. And it's going to be open to all artists, cultural workers, arts organizations, and social service organizations from any level of experience or discipline. So really, any form of art that you could think imaginable. Photography, videography, performing arts, muralists, people who make sculptures, sky's the limit. And it's open to individuals and nonprofit organizations. Nonprofit organizations are going to be eligible to get up to three hundred thousand dollars. An individual artist can get up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to complete art projects in your community. It's going to be funding projects relative to one of four focus areas. The first being public and health awareness messages to stop the spread of COVID, water, energy, conservation, climate mitigation, and emergency preparedness, civic engagement, including election participation, and social justice and community engagement. Those are the four focus areas. It's designed to uplift communities in the bottom quartile of the Healthy Places Index, which is an index put out by a nonprofit in Southern California that the state uses to gauge where they should send support money to. So for reference, all of Stanislaus County scores in the thirtieth percentile of the HPI. So every community here scores very favorably in that index and will score favorably for the grant program. A general timeline, the application opened February fifteenth. It's going to be open through April fifteenth. And those awards are going to be made in May. And if we don't give out all the money, there's going to be a phase two opening May first through June fifteenth. And those awards will be made in July, and all projects have to be done by July of next year. That's the general background information. If you guys have artists or nonprofits in your community that you think could benefit from this, we encourage them to get in touch with us. They can get in touch with me at info@stanislausarts.org by email. And the grant portal is www.hartlandcreativecore.org, and that's where they can access the grant application. Are there any questions? Okay, so the question was, is it open to student artists? So the money is being funded to individuals eighteen or older or to nonprofit organizations, but that doesn't mean that your target audience for your project, your target audience can be minors, but the the funding is going to be going to adults. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Austin. Next, we have from our upcoming event, Bridging the Gap, Macy Silva will be presenting.
Buddy. Um, hi, I'm Macy Silva. I'm from Valley CRSPDC. I am a project manager. I also have Irene from Grounded Productions.
Hi, I'm Irene. My business is Grounded Productions. I'm also the vice president of the Series Chamber of Commerce.
We're just here to talk about the event. I was here two weeks ago, kind of touched base a little bit, but this is going to be more of an in-depth talking about the vendors and the other co-hosts who are putting on the event. Great. Yes, so the other event hosts are City Series. Mayor Javier is going to be emceeing the event. Ethan Berry involved in the process, so is Tamra. This is really a cohesive event with the city. Also, Valley CRSPDC and Post Opportunity Stanislaus, and we're an economic development agency who's been serving Stanislaus County for twenty years. And the Series Chamber of Commerce, which Irene is part of, and Amy and Randy in the chamber have also been in every meeting we've had for the past couple of months. And then Grounded Productions also is a.
We are connecting link from the vendors that started in the pop-up world that need the resources that we're providing at this event.
This event will include networking opportunities, exclusive workshops led by our consultants, invaluable information from our vendors. I kind of want to talk about that a little bit, but first let's get over some information. There we go. The event is going to be next Friday, March twenty-fourth, not this Friday, the one after that. The event runs from nine AM to twelve PM, but doors open at eight thirty. There's going to be networking time for the first thirty minutes with all the vendors and a little bit of time at the very end. So if you are planning on attending, please be there right at eight thirty, so you have all the networking time you can get. It's going to be right here in the Series Community Center. It's free, and it's going to be food and drinks available for purchase. We encourage all local business owners and staff and future entrepreneurs to come. Also, community members, it's going to be a great chance to get to know your local business owner and staff. That's a small caveat, but it's still, it's good to build community where you can. So here's the workshop. So we have two sets of workshops, four workshops in total. The first set is going to be starting at nine thirty. They're going to be forty-five minute workshops. So when you come to the event, you have an option of doing two paths. You can go do the marketing strategy with Rene Ledbetter, or you can go do business startup with Paco Pradas Romero. Both of them are amazing consultants who've done many workshops for us, but the marketing strategy would be more of how to put your money where it matters, how to judge and analyze your marketing efforts in the past, how to kind of pivot. It's very strategic-based. And then the business startups, it'd be going over business plan, possible funding sources, every aspect that you need to run your business. And then step two, it's kind of our next level one, is going to be social media marketing with Dominica Escatell and/or business leadership with our CEO of Opportunity Stanislaus, Dave White. Both of them are great workshops, all four of them we've done in the past, and they're really, they know their stuff. It would be very informative for everyone that comes. And then I'm going to, a little bit of caveat, I turned these slides two weeks ago, we've added a couple more vendors, so I'm just going to go through what we have so far. We have the Stanislaus Latino Chamber of Commerce. They used to be the Central Valley Expansion Chamber of Commerce, but they changed their name two weeks ago. The California Employer Employer Association, who runs the Stanislaus County HR hotline. Success Capital and Valley First Credit Unions are banks that do CDFIs, which are small business loan applications. Stanislaus Equity Partners, Ledbetter and Associates, the SBA, who's one of our funders, who'll be able to talk about different small business loans. El Conceilio, California, and a very small text, the US Department of Commerce also is coming to be involved. And they have two more additions, sorry, three more, Workforce Development, Insure One and JB Copywriting, who are two local businesses are also joining us. So it'll be a full house, we have sixteen in total, and each of the hosts are also going to have time. All right, I'm going to skip this slide really quick because that's not the correct logo. So yeah, Mayor Javier is hosting the event, and we're going to have two business owners there. They're going to be sharing their story. They're going to have time to kind of speak about how they started up in series and how it's been to run their business here. And Mayor Javier is really excited, and him and I are working on getting some really good speakers.
Yes, we are working on two local businesses to be able to provide their personal experience, what it's been like to do business in series, how it's grown and what it does for them and how it's changed them as a person. Something to kind of give future business owners and current business owners that inspirational aspect of it to keep them going.
Thank you to Marv Nation. They are a Southern California business, but they are, thanks to Mayor Javier, are donating some money towards food, some of the marketing. And then we also have Insure One, who's donating some drinks to the event. Thank you so much to our sponsors. Then again, I want to thank our hosts, City Series, Valley CRSPDC, Opportunity Stanislaus, Series Chamber of Commerce, and Grounded Production. And here's how you register. You can click on, if you're online right now, you scan the little QR code, or you can go to valleysmallbiz.com/thegap. And all of the hosts currently have a post about this on our Instagram and Facebook. So if you want to find any one of us, go on there, click the link. We can also be found on EdBright, but we're pretty easy to find. We're free.
And you may not be there yourself, but you may know someone who has a small business or something they want to get their hearts into, and this is the best resource for them to get to because it's all local. That's it. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Moving right along. Next, we have Citizen Communication. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number two thousand seven one oh six for expression, non-agenda items. Matters under jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on agenda may may be addressed by the general public. However, California laws prohibit the city council from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council may adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber door. We have anybody in person that would like to speak?
Hey, Prada Series, you know, you got the American flag on the wrong side.
Figured that out when we went to do the National Anthem.
Also, your two apps, a map on there, the report instance on on anything. You can expand it so you can pinpoint where where the issue is.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in person like to speak? Seeing none, moving to Zoom. Public comment through Zoom is now open. Please raise your hand to request to speak. If you are participating by telephone, please press star nine on your phone. For those participating through Zoom, the city clerk will name you in order of the requests are received. When it's time for you to speak, the city clerk will unmute your microphone. City clerk, please provide the name of each person that has requested to speak. Are there anybody on Zoom with their hand up that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
At this time, we have no more hands or nobody in public that would like to speak, so Citizen Communication time is over. Appointments to boards and commission, we have done. Does anyone on the council have a conflict of interest that they'd like to declare? Seeing none, move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine by nature and will be enacted by one single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public or special consideration. Otherwise, the recommended recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council would like to pull a consent calendar item?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to pull item five.
Item five. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, need a motion to accept the consent calendar minus number five.
Excuse me.
I made a mistake, knew it was coming. Thank you, Daniel. Does anybody in the public would like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, moving on and asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept items one through four and six through ten of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Resolution number twenty-two-three-twenty-five, approving a budget amendment to transfer funds from AB one oh nine Board of State and Community Corrections Allocation Fund to the General Fund to assist project resolve with conducting a countywide survey and fund the Series Unified School District Lunch mentoring program. Mr. Martinez.
Yes, thank you. Captain Perry, add a quick question. Are the dates and locations of schools already selected for the mentorship program? And if not, does Series Unified School District need to reach out to you? And if so, who do they contact?
The dates and the locations are already selected. The mentorship program has been going on already for a couple of years, and they have a full calendar of dates already set all the way and up to April twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any public comment on that resolution before we move on? Seeing none.
Vice Mayor, just to confirm the chat Zoom as well.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, how about Zoom? Anybody with their hand up on this matter?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-five.
Roll call, please.
Okay, can I second that, please?
Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Moving on to new business, resolution twenty-two-three thirty-one, nominating a candidate to the Special City Selection Committee for appointing to the governing board of San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, Stanislaus seat, or reject all candidates. City Manager, could you comment on that, please?
Sure, I've got a brief presentation this evening, Vice Mayor and council. On March sixth, city staff received notification from the air district of the current vacancy on the governing board that must be filled by a city representative from a large city in the county, meaning a population of a hundred thousand or more. Pursuant to state law, appointments to the district governing board will be made by the San Joaquin Valley Special City Selection Committee. And the next step in that appointment process is for the council to consider a nomination to that nomination or selection committee. So this evening, as of the writing and posting, writing of the staff report and posting of the agenda, there were two candidates. Late last week, we were informed by the air district that Mr. Wright, Councilmember Wright from Modesto, had withdrawn his application. So at this point, there is one application before you as a council to consider for nomination, which is Councilmember Rosa Escuchia Brayton from the city of Modesto. So this evening, the council can consider nominating the council member from Modesto or rejecting that and making that recommendation to the city selection committee. At this point, that's all I have. There was an application and a letter from the council member of Modesto in the agenda packet that was included in the agenda packet. So that's all I have this evening.
City Manager, I have a question, sir. Should we decide not to appoint anyone tonight with the process after that?
We would just, if the council chose to nominate an individual, we would forward the action onto the air district.
Any questions or comments from the council? The public, any questions or comment on this matter from the public? I'll move to approve Rosa for the city councilperson from Modesto to this position.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Moving on, resolution twenty-two-three thirty-two, authorizing amendment number thirteen to the agreements for professional consulting services between the City of Series and NV Five Inc. And authorizing budget amendments for amendment twelve and thirteen for the SR ninety-nine Service Road and Mitchell Interchange. Any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we do have a brief snap presentation by a city engineer, if the council would like that.
Awesome. Chrois, would you like to present that, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor. Council members. The current contract for professional consulting services on the SR ninety-nine Service Mitchell Road interchange project was originally executed in with NV Five in two thousand and six. To date, there have been twelve amendments approved by council. The prior two amendments, numbers eleven and twelve, authorized and adjusted the ninety-five percent PS and E budget and scope. Although amendment number twelve approved, a necessary budget amendment was inadvertently omitted from the resolution. Like amendment twelve, amendment thirteen seeks to increase the design budget in the amount of six hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars to account for additional design activities such as side peek and traffic studies, among other, that were not previously included in prior amendments but are necessary to complete the ninety-five percent design documents on schedule. Amendment thirteen, design activities include the following additional side peek analysis, design modifications by Kimberly Horn, NV Five, and Odell Engineering, Modestal Park Department revisions, environmental study provisions, additional traffic study, and additional project management and coordination support. NV Five has provided a tentative date of July two thousand twenty-four to complete design activities for the ninety-five percent PS and E. Staff has requested a schedule from NV Five to estimate ROW acquisition and delivery of a hundred percent construction documents for solicitation. To support this final design schedule, staff is concurrently drafting, is currently drafting an RFP for the solicitation and selection of a right-of-way consultant to begin the necessary ROW acquisitions in the next few weeks. Over the next few years, as the ROWs are acquired, NV Five will concurrently work to deliver the hundred percent construction documents for solicitation and selection of an experienced bridge contractor. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution twenty-two-three dash thirty-two, authorizing amendment number thirteen to increase the ninety-five percent PS and E design budget with NV Five by the amount of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, and to direct the finance director to make the appropriate accounting entries to fund the amendments to numbers twelve and thirteen.
Thank you. Any questions now from the council? Any questions from the public about this matter? Oh?
Mr. Vice Mayor, questions on Zoom?
Anyone else? Any hands raised on Zoom to this matter?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve resolution.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think you may have public comment in the audience.
Okay. Does anybody have any comment that's in this room on this matter? I had asked for comment already, and I didn't see any hands up.
Yes, Vice Mayor, John Warren. Good evening, council members. I just wanted to comment that recently on Facebook, there has been some comment about the interchange over across that show that be developed. And I did make a reply to that comment on social media. And I noticed the council from just do all that comment. So the public is aware, but they're very uninformed what's going on.
Can you state your name for the record, please? Can you state your name, please?
Well, I thought I did. John Warren, City of Series.
Thank you. Sorry, I must have missed it. I'll motion to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash thirty-two. Amendment to number thirteen to the agreements for professional consulting services between City of Series and NV Five Inc. and authorizing budget amendments for amendment twelve and thirteen for the the Service Ninety-Nine Service and Mitchell Road Interchange.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
District three, Mayor, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we'll now adjoint this meeting, go into closed session for a conference regarding liability claims, California Government Code five nine, five four nine, five six point ninety-five claimant.
Vice Mayor.
We have a few sections before that, before we go into close session. Apologize for reports.
Thank you. My apologies. Do any council members have any referrals? Thank you. At this time, council members or staff will make an announcement or report briefly on his or her activities if they would choose. Okay, so as I stated at the beginning, I'd probably screw something up, which I have several times. We're going to jump back up to discussion items. Thank goodness what I've messed up isn't anything that's tragic for series. Go ahead for discussion items.
So I just have a report regarding what was going on. We have an economic development or EDAC meeting that's coming up this month. So I do tend to be in present for that. I'm still working with Series Partnership for Healthy Families. We have an upcoming in May, as we know, is mental health awareness. We're working on a free presentation here in the community center, so we're working with that. We did get confirmation, almost completely confirmed with Telemundo, that they'll be here broadcasting and emceeing the event here at the community center. Other than that, I think everything else is good in my district.
Thank you. Anybody on the council have any referrals? Moving on, report at this time with any council members or city staff. Make an announcement or a brief report on whatever they may choose. Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Martinez.
So I just wanted to remind everybody that uh, I believe it's Friday, March thirty-first from five thirty to seven thirty will be the city's extravaganza. It's going to be here at the community center. Uh, there's going to be decorations. I believe there'll be an Easter egg hunt. Uh, I got roped into being the Easter bunny like I did for Santa Claus. So I'll be here doing that. Uh, but again, that's Friday, March thirty-first from five thirty to seven thirty, and I'll be here in this building.
Other council members, city staff. City manager?
Uh, just very briefly during the bridging the gap presentation, I scanned the QR code for registration, took right, took me right to the event bright site. Uh, was fast and convenient. So uh, encourage folks to use that QR code to go jump right to that site. That's all.
Devin, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to report that we're working closely with uh, Odell Engineering to develop the seventy percent Smirnoff Park design. And just want to give you an update on the progress.
Thank you. Anyone else? Somebody from the audience?
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, the fire department wanted to provide a brief update uh, on the storm event.
So I'd like to uh, just kind of give you a brief update. Uh, but also fire uh, along with our partner agencies are assisting Stanislaus County. In their EOC that stood up to a level one and currently operating now and expected to operate that way through uh, Friday of this week and then look at downgrading that. Uh, the evacuation orders uh, still remain in effect uh, on River Road here um, between. Right here. Between River, on River Road between uh, South Ninth and Avon Street. And so those uh, continue to monitor the Twomey River. Uh, as of yet, a lot of people haven't necessarily heeded that order. Um, we're still kind of trying to encourage them to uh, to get out ahead of time. Uh, we expect the the river to crest uh, tomorrow, Wednesday. Uh, with the storms expected through tomorrow. And we'll see that runoff. Uh, you can go to stanemergency.com. There's a dashboard there for the community. Uh, they can pull that up and uh, they can see all the levels uh, of the dry creek of Twomey River. And all the rivers in the area that affect us and kind of monitor that. And we encourage them to continue to look. Uh, and and you know, be aware and and know when uh, to get out with the orders. So. From the Modesto part, fire department's perspective, we're assisting the EU, in the EOC uh, in the PIO, the Public Information Officer. Uh, Chief Darren Jessburg is assisting with that. And we've also been assisting uh, in the plan section chief. And developing the plans and uh, assisting the county with that. Uh, we have not stood up the incident management team as of yet. Uh, we're just assisting them at this time. And if any need arises, uh, they will take that action. And so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions at this time.
Uh, would you mind plugging that website one more time where people could look to see the the water levels?
Yeah, so it's stanemergency.com. And you can, it's uh, you can go to the Stanislaus County webpage and it'll guide you to that. But uh, Stanislaus County or stanemergency.com. And there's the dashboard there to uh, to navigate through and give you some more information.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else in the room have a report? How about Mr. Condit or somebody from his office on Zoom possibly?
I do not see him on Zoom.
Thank you. There anything else I missed before we go to closed session? Might as well throw it out there now. Kind of start this over. We will now adjourn this meeting, go to closed session for a conference regarding liability claims, California Government Code. Section five four nine, five six nine five, claimant Emily Ontonail. The PETA agency claimed against City of Series. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regard to this closed session item? After closed session, I will return and report out.
No comments on Zoom.
Thank you. This session is. Over. So on the matter of closed session. The, we rejected the claim four zero. Thank you.